Great.
Hey. Finally, you can sit by the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, buddy.
Morning.
Oh, we have all the order. We do have a forum to take the motion to approve the agenda in the minute. So motion or second?
My second.
Any discussions? Our favorite I. All right, both. All right, we've got an agenda. So start with Rich.
Morning. I'm trying to set a plan through the view. It's immediately changed some things on and they didn't answer software. We're going to get that done today so they can be in tomorrow. When did you Friday to be done in the morning? The paving association worked out and sent on the committees for that. I mean, we did have a hole in the road last week, got it over kind of like that. Told you guys that this morning. Pretty big one. So stuff like that just kind of pops up. Must have been up in dirt for years and it's finally showed itself. So hard to tell how many of them are out there yet. But uh, what I do have is I have a final construction project voucher for the swap project. Um, parent eighty. It's for Peterson contractors. Those are the box covered on three hundred and fiftieth street a couple of years ago. We just need to get the actual official final paid off or signed by the board as the advisor, always everything else. But in order for them to take the final payment on the approval to pay the retained of four thousand one hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty eight cents. Total project cost was one hundred and thirty nine thousand five hundred ninety five dollars eighty six cents. And it was good at one sixty five thousand eight forty nine thirty.
Good. Your motion to uh approve the uh progress voucher. For S E ninety.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, well, if it's second, you have to captain on it. Hearing none. Uh, all in favor, I. I suppose.
You don't want to let me decide.
Yeah, you need to sign it. Right.
Right. It's the bottom line. There's other contractors. Put your name on it somewhere underneath. Thank you. That's all I've got. We're in form. You getting rich?
Nope. Yeah. Move on drainage. I didn't see any claims, any work order. That's impossible action on BD seventy two. So I feel that's enough. Well.
Yes.
Got it all figured out, huh?
I did. So I got it all fixed. Um, I got those nineteen abated last week. Jake and I got those done. And then so now I have the seventy five parcels that need to be assessed. The correct amount um to bring up their so assess the difference, then they pay the correct amount. And then after they pay their assessments, then I'll do the refunds to the other. Mark.
Yeah.
But I've got that.
You got it figured out. We got it under control. Thank you.
Remember to deal with a couple of phone calls.
Happy soon.
Set whatever it out. This is the heads up.
Right. Is everybody okay with it? Do they understand, isn't it?
For the most part, yeah.
I mean, I like they know all the work got done. So it's yeah. So yeah. Uh, is there a motion to uh improve the special assessment for BD seventy two?
So.
Their second.
I'm sorry.
What was the second? Any other discussion on it? Hearing none. All in favor, I.
All right.
I propose. Gary.
Okay.
For range.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, no questions to speak.
Oh.
There's a payroll. Payroll. You motion approved payroll claims. I make a motion to put payroll on.
No, so.
Yeah, what will say it? The extension. Hearing none, all pay right.
All right.
All right, both. What will hear it? Support.
Here.
There for. Your motion to approve the share support.
So.
I guess I'll second it. Right, the discussion. You know, okay, right.
Bye.
I both. Period.
There again.
Payroll eligibility. Little change in the traditional period and slowly for the treatment, but they're pushing the proof payroll change.
I'm like I'm watching for the payroll change.
I got.
I'm sorry.
The discussion. Hearing none, all pay right.
All right.
All right, both. Looking like. You know. Uh, revolution related to financing proposed projects being undertaken by Worth County, Iowa, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
We put the six million dollars in there just to make sure we covered anything that could have. We can always go lower, but we figured we'd put that number just in case. So this basically will let you um tip the project and and bring back what we just paid for this last week for the real estate.
Property.
Yeah. Legal stuff.
Yep, legal jargon. Six million for acquisition, construction, improvement, equipment and renovating of conservation, sheriff, EMA and secondary road facilities, including the acquisition of realty. Not our sixty million and their motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four oh four.
I'm like a motion. Your second?
Uh, sorry. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Lower eyes maybe, stone eye. Resolution of the doubt.
Well, it's especially growing, I get.
Yeah. Water system improvement, Sajin. Um, my top to do Jay three. Actually.
Yeah.
Uh. Uh, he had submitted some more stuff, a few more things that he and I like the week before last. He's hoping to hear something that we can. We've got the free approval that he gets going on the rest of his job. So he says they gotta be out there with the V N R.
Did he talk about the holiday yet?
What's that?
On rates.
Yeah, he has been talking with them. Uh. Like he said, there's the owner of Ohio and there's a little bit of a language barrier. So he's been communicating through the manager. Through the owners, so. But sounds like we're moving as fast as we can on that one. Uh. When the worst bet go. Getting that. Look at the feet out there. We got it. We're still down here. You want some?
Yeah.
Yep.
How are you doing, Melissa?
Good. Um, we had the legislative forum with Representative Bloomingdale at um Northwood on Saturday. It was three hours long, so it was good discussion.
Good.
And this weekend, just catching up on emails and phone calls.
Sounds good. I'll be one of the phone calls later today.
All right.
We get any from Melissa? No, no. All right. Thank you, Melissa. Uh. EMS discussion. Possible action originating ARP funds to EMS providers in the county. Hey, guys. Talk about it. Talk about, talk about it. You wanna move on?
We gotta do something. Yeah.
Which would. It would have been nice to find out, you know, have that other the water project done. So we knew exactly where we came in there, but I guess we'll have to just use that seven hundred thousand dollar. You know, that we set aside for for now, which pushes us twenty three thousand. But. Well, like I said, we've, we have talked and talked and talked and everybody's going in the right direction. It just I'm, you know, the speed of government is fantastic. So what it's gonna take to get them where they need to be, that's just gonna help fill that gap, I guess. Um, we put money numerous other places to benefit the county. So I think this would be another good one. Well, we got the last you, you know, but I got the auditor's office. We had one million, ninety two thousand in there, but if you take away the seven hundred thousand for the water system and then take that L A T C F funds for a hundred thousand away. Like I said at the last meeting, you're looking at two hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. So if the, we could if that project runs over on us and the seven hundred thousand dollars doesn't cover it, we could use part of that hundred thousand dollars because we can use that any place we want to. We'd still have, but how much of the two hundred ninety two we want to use, you know? Would you?
Probably went with eighty thousand with beats that they was fifty two thousand plus a hundred thousand of L A T C F.
That'd be the high end. You know, I'm sitting between sixty and eighty someplace in the. What do you think, Mark?
No, I think that's a good idea. We gotta have a yeah, someplace.
Well, I know for the west side, eight thousand would cover them for two years until their tax that they pull uh, in their accounts done. The south end would get us through one year down there. Um. And then we uh working on some other discussion of what, how to come up with the funding for that gap year that we get.
Year hopefully and hopefully something can be done before that.
Right.
The legislation.
Yeah. Yeah, um, and then up here, I guess. And there's, you know, keep them alive, keep them going. Um. Yeah, I don't, yeah, that'd be the top end that I would want to do is eighty thousand for the three entities that are involved, just a contribution there from. Basically, we would just have to build the entities. Do what? Build the entities, get an invoice stating the. No, we just make a contribution to their.
To them.
To them.
And they would be. Well, somebody's gonna get the bill.
We can do it just like we did with a.
Well, I just.
But are you still gonna get more bills from Mason? I mean, I still.
Right, but I'm just, yeah, if we get a, an invoice or, but do we need a bill stating that this is for services for
well.
Twenty three, twenty four? You know what I mean? Well, then you'd mess up Northwood because they're a five oh one C three from my understanding. If they bill you, you just took them out of the game. And that's not fair to these people in the north end.
Right. You're right.
Cause you can make it a donate.
They're a nonprofit.
Yeah.
It could be a donate.
Seems to be technical.
Yeah, you'd really have a lot of citizens up here upset.
We need to do probably a resolution that I'll need to put together to disperse the ARP funds and then.
Yeah, I would just say, why don't we guess I don't know the process. I would just say wha- whatever it takes to do to get the money to those people.
Give me a number.
Eighty thousand. Per, per entity, three entities. Mason City Ambulance, Winnebago Four City Ambulance, and North of Amman.
North is a more.
You want that as a motion? Make.
And then we'll.
I'm certain.
Yeah, there's more than seconds. Commit two hundred and forty thousand total to the ambulance providers in the county. Is there any other discussion on it? Hearing none, real call bill, low bird, eyes maybe, stone. Thank you, guys. I hope it'll be well accepted by the county. Everyone in the county. All right. Um. I'm gonna jump down and do people service.
Yeah.
Guys moving. These other kind of whatever stuff might be some conversations.
There is. See you in here.
Thanks for having us.
Yep.
Must have got it.
Yeah, we did.
New uh updated quote from North Central Mechanical. Yeah, uh, we had them come out again last week. And they brought uh Blazek Electric with them. The, and I don't believe that this um was noted on any other uh estimates, but there the breaker, not the whole break full uh box, but the breaker has to be changed. And at first we were concerned about wiring size because this unit is slightly bigger. They don't sell this like for like anymore. So we were concerned about having to upgrade wiring, hold new wire. Um, but that does not have to be done. So, but the breaker does have to be changed. I don't think that was on anything else. So this is everything out the door. No extra. Nothing's coming up afterward. So that's where that's at. Good. So you guys can do what you will without. The other thing that I think we missed last week was we went ahead and maybe you can.
Yeah, I, I think I talked about it when I was here a month or so ago. There was a jet mixing pump in the digester that went out and I had Jason come uh with a body pump, put in a spare. Well, that spare quit working. So then we don't, we, we don't have it. Another pump to put in. So I just gave him the go ahead to rebuild that, rebuild the pump, the original that went out. It's just so there's a seal fail. Um. That way we have a pump to put in because right now there's nothing and a week ago when it was freezing, there was no mixing going on. So I had, you know, out there breaking up ice on that digester. It was kind of an emergency to get a new pump built. So.
Sure.
You need a backup again then? Or is that in the bill?
No, that's just a rebuild.
This is just the rebuild on the original.
Is the back, was the backup ours or was it his?
The backup was ours. It was the spare.
Okay.
We're gonna need to rebuild it.
So that.
Well, we'll have them take a look at it. I'm not sure what, there's no seal fail or any alarm. It's just not, not running like it. So I, we'll have them pull it, take a look.
Yeah, when, when he, when he finishes that one, we can pull the the one that's in there right now, then we can determine where we're at.
Okay. Um. Well. Yeah, I have them honestly. So then how this gets us to apples, apples.
I think that one's a little more inclusive than everything else because of the breaker.
Sure.
Uh, when Young came out, they didn't bring an electrician and we weren't, I wasn't there and I don't think Taylor was there when Jim and dudes came out. And I think they're just so far out of or I mean they were short on all sorts of stuff. So.
Right.
It kind of came down to Young and these guys.
Uh. Thirty thousand five sixty. So something on fix. And the place, we almost as far as the wastewater is expensive, yes. And we're in that phase of uh rebuild and replace because the plant's just getting to that age. So uh, there's a motion to approve the, the North Central Mechanical for the air, air changer.
Make that a motion.
I get.
I'll second it.
Yeah, any other discussion? All pay right.
All right.
I propose. All right. It's made a sign. That's pretty good on sign.
Or you can have it. We're scratching in here.
And uh we'll just scan that over, email it over to you guys. Assign copy.
Thanks.
All right, man, uh. Seven hundred for this.
Just to rebuild on.
The dream.
Rebuild on.
Yeah.
Cause you haven't got to have it.
Yeah, yeah.
What's question is.
And then just have them look at the other one and get us a price. See what's wrong with it. Get a price on the, the spare.
Yeah.
If you would.
Yeah.
So.
And we were, we were under a little bit of pressure with that one because it was so cold without. You know.
Right, we gotta, gotta have something.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the rebuilding of the home.
Yeah.
Just like it's like enough.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all pay right. I'm like, I propose. Thanks. Yeah. Yeah, just give us them or that's not on that. Maybe you email it over to us or whatever.
Yes.
I was open there.
Okay.
Any else?
Uh, just that we're gonna be as transparent and communicative, communicate. We're gonna, yeah, yes. We're gonna do that.
We appreciate that.
So. Thank you, guys.
Don't team. Can we hire and freeze discussion possible action?
I just think we gotta be looking at here. I mean, it's not just one year. We gotta be thinking about two years though, yeah, maybe three years, so. I mean, we have been pretty famous in the past. Just let them go ahead and do it because it's been in the budgets. And we just really don't know what's going on here going forward with these levies. I mean, we know they're gonna ratchet down, but we don't know where that bottom figure is gonna be on the general. So and it's not flat out freeze either. I'm talking about here would be they could be a discussion between the board and employer. Appreciate the information you said on this weekend. It's a little more kind of parent, I guess, gives you an idea where the funds are coming from.
I guess my attitude on it is that, you know, you do, if you do it, we do a counting wide hiring freeze, it would be pending board approval. When you come to us with the same thing you did.
Yeah.
And we go yes or no that, yeah, we definitely need to replace that individual. No, what options do we have?
Or can we hold off?
Or can we hold off, you know?
What do you think, AJ?
Uh, yeah, I, I hate to say it, but it's for now, it's, it's what's gonna have to happen. Just until we got a better idea where this is gonna shake out because we're not even gonna be the same next year. We're gonna be less next year. So.
More likely. I mean, I don't really have for the evaluations to make up that difference on what we've got left.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just worried. We'll do some other things in the interim here and get that straightened out.
I don't like the fact that somebody leaving a job to come to work at the county and then a year from now, we go, oh, we gotta let you go.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it happens. There's no, we can avoid that, but.
Right.
And the other deal is, you know, you know, we, if you come to us like you did, Jake, where you sent us the information, we sit down and have a discussion about it and.
Yeah.
Well, and I know you know, all the Cal was that heck with time finding everybody. Sheriff's offices down one state. Just based on number, you know, discussions we've had. I mean, what do you think, Jake? Can you get by for a while?
It'd be a very short one without, without cutting any.
Right.
I mean, I got, was, you know, we don't know day to day too with any, what's gonna happen. She had her episode last week and live out for a week again, you know. And at that point, if stuff's gone, we're going to two of us. And at that point, it is, we just shut them. I mean, the easiest solution would be to shut down driver's license, which like I said, it's not, that's not our big revenue deal. That's why we shut it down first. But it's also, that's one of those kind of conveniences that people miss out on. It's when they're, it's a one stop shop. We, we get money if you come from out of county. We're getting extra dollars that way. And it's also just, I mean, we have people that come up from Mason City and while they're in town, it's in here at all time. Where the good place to eat, you know, if you guys have a Dollar General, I gotta run here. So you have a, you know, a grocery store, you have whatever. What do you mean? You're bringing, bringing dollars into the county one way or another, just not directly.
Yeah.
For what our, our revenue is out of our office, but.
Man, I know because of that, you get to see a lot more traffic because like you're going to activate the driver's license, license plate, whatever.
Um. It's like you said, the stuff, the, the proposals to our, with our new legislation, um, the relationships that we have going right now, we're back. I'm pretty dang good in terms of the Auto Dealers Association with uh the B L T and so collaborating to come up with a fee structure that makes it so triggered up. It's a one that just you won't lose employees, you know, it's your your revenue just without the tax dollars, just off the mortgage or revenue justifies your, your budget, your.
Right.
That's very kind of nice and.
Uh, I guess my suggestion is we do, we, we make an action this day. We fight and do the free, but it doesn't, doesn't close the door for you. It gives you the opportunity to, you've got some figures together. You get on the agenda for next week. You can come in and discuss the what we're doing, the budget discussion. Give us some good projections and uh you know, so that would give you a little player time for, and we could maybe, you know, figure it out. But uh I, I think for now, and I'm not sure how you stated that.
I'm just stating that if you do a hiring freeze, then you put together, you know, then you come to us and we take a look at it. And then you get a approval, a motion from the board of supervisors to say, yes, go ahead and hire or no, let's hold off for a while.
Yeah. I'm down one already and I will be down another one in March. I don't know often I can get, but I know these positions have been budgeted for in the past already. I'm just ready to put the city head count.
And that's not saying you're not gonna get it. We're just saying. So we know what's coming.
All right.
Yep.
How does that work with um people with boards?
Well, it would still, I mean, it's still subject to their board.
And not, and the ones not in your font or not in your budget, how, how does that work?
If they're not in your budget, they still would have to come through us. I mean, and be able to figure it out. But I mean, generally, we haven't really hired anybody that's not in budget. Usually it's been projected a year ahead of time. From what I can, what I can remember anyway.
Yeah.
You know, it's been talked about in the previous budget year discussion. I mean, if uh, you've talked in the past that maybe if things happen that you would have to add another employee at one time, and you're, you talked about it. Apparently never.
It hasn't materialized.
No.
So um.
For, for what we're seeing right now, it's the, the tax wise traffic coming through more online payments and stuff.
So that's kind of free that up a little bit.
Yeah.
And I can see that.
My, my, my major concern is just to like, I mean, we're, we're dead in the middle of our hiring process. We got applicants, we're calling to make interviews. Is this something? You know, we, I need to know what I tell those applicants too, when we're doing what their, their timeline is.
Correct.
But. Start dates kind of to be determined again. You know, on stop the process.
Well, yeah, and it's, we're hoping to get somebody in the, I mean, the timeline of that was the application process closes this Friday. We'd be doing interviews and have somebody hired by next Friday. And be able to tell them they get there two weeks and that way their start date is the last week of February and they can train the staff for three days before she done. Cause she sells some big agents that she has to get used up before she's out. And so there's certain days she's gonna be on.
Yep.
Let me say I I could see looking at yours pretty closely. I mean, you've done some good projecting, you know.
Even without the projections, the we're supplementing our tax dollars by two hundred and seventy seven thousand every year in line, you know, it's that's two hundred and seventy seven grand. It'll be easy. You guys get there. You've been.
A lot of us.
That's. Yeah, that's it. We must.
And you're the most traffic of any of that.
See, it's nice to space a little, require a fee.
You know, and that's, and that's been it. It's the the trade or something. We aren't, we knew it either. We want to lower the tax side of it and do it with feet. I mean, not everybody have, you know, buys a new car every year. Not everybody does this. They shouldn't be penalized for higher taxes. You can take it out and figure it out. Or fees instead and, you know, those fees are it's it's changed compared to what the transactions are, you know. But it, it'll make that big of a difference. I mean, it's the projecting or being close to sixty thousand more dollars.
Right. Yeah.
As you have, you have public health board, you know, we have, you know, two employees here. You would just like to have some chance to do how this would affect us and, you know, so onto the last, you know, we've been short of nurse for a, a long time and it's been very difficult for us to hire anybody because what we're offering for paid is probably fifteen dollars an hour less than what they get to nursing. But we understand we can't go ahead and pay the high wage.
Yeah.
Um. Being short a person like this, you know, uh, as I went over and looked to the code of Iowa yesterday, local boards of health, their duties and our duties enlisted in code are to provide adequate personnel to fill positions that are needed within the county To fill positions that are needed within the county and take care of the people. So that kind of puts us in a quandary, I mean, we're, are, you're gonna go against the, the, uh. Code or what, and I will ask Jesse to kind of talk about. You know, what, what's been happening, we're losing revenue in a sense, because. You know, all the revenue that comes from the public health goes back into the general fund. You know, we're not keeping it for ourselves in any way, but, um, maybe Jesse could just give some highlights as to. All the nursing thing and, and what happened last year with, uh, our inability to fill positions.
I guess our biggest concern, um, we do what we can with the staff that we have, but we have a lot of requirements. Lot of duties that require RNs, and so, and one of the big things and would be affected is the people of our county. A lot of, a lot of the paperwork, the duties require an RN, and we're, right now, that's the position we're looking to fill. So it therefore affects the number of people we can serve, um. You know, someone breaks a hip, needs, you know, is able to come home from the hospital. We don't have the RNs to admit that person onto service and continue it. And Mercy Home Care sometimes struggles too and denies or turns down patients, that person's either gonna have to go to skilled or a nursing home. You know, and, and we're here for the people of the county, so without that, trying to fill that position, we are limited on what we can provide.
I'd like, you know, if you could explain a little bit more, if I'm understanding what I read in a code this year, if you impose. Hiring freeze, then the departments do have, uh, gaps to, to re- write a written request. To present to the board for possible approval. Is that gonna be across the board then, everybody just have to do that, if they, you know, does, uh. The Air Office is gonna have to do that for everyone they need hired as well, or what, or how, how do you, what, or what type of a long term? Um, hiring freeze are you looking at, are you looking at thirty days, or are you looking at what?
Oh, I think it's definitely something we could look, take an off if we knew where we were at budget wise.
Yeah.
I mean, we can make this come, I mean, we can make everything work, but we don't know, we just, there's so many unknowns here. And I truthfully think we need to be thinking about the next three years, along with some other possibilities of revenue loss in the next. Four years, some revenue could disappear, that's gonna affect the budget. And it's not, like I say, it's not, we're, we're not saying no, we're just saying we need to. Be able to take a look at this, and we don't know, the only thing we could do short, shortly would be is the hire comes across, we could deny it. We could just flat out say, you know what, we just can't foresee doing it today, it's not gonna work in the budget. But that's why here, we can have that discussion, you can present your facts, I mean, I know you'd have to go up pa- patient prediction, and that's gonna be hard to do. But. You know, it's, it's kind of the way it is, and I mean, we, you know, and at what point can we have a nurse sitting there too, if we don't know the patients coming in? You know, I mean, you do compete with Mercy, you compete with other places, I mean, you don't provide P T, do you? So I mean, there's, there's things that, you know, you're not gonna get some patients because of that. I mean, and I, I don't want anybody working short either, you know, I mean, you can't do, you don't do overtime defeated, but, um, it's just something I think that. You know, I would really like to see proposals come back to us before we make that decision to either deny or accept that employee, and this does give us the ability to do that.
And you do get their payroll eligibility form, you.
We've never turned out, and they've gone through the process, and always say, heck, you know, we're in this budget process, Jake. We might be looking at letting that employee go until I want, because the new budget starts up and we just can't afford it. And.
But when it hits payroll eligibility, it's our gaskets.
Yeah, and usually, like I say, that's always been in the budget projections, and we know we can do it. And it's not to say that a new employee that, eh, when we get done with this budget, it will be, but for right now, it's kind of like. You know, we should probably hold back or at least have some better ideas of why you really need that, or how is it gonna work? And.
Well, and this isn't an extra employee, this is somebody that he's budgeted for, for years.
But again, looking three years down the road, we may be looking at employee cuts. We've gone through this before in this county, before you got on, it's been done, Secretary Rose lost a lot of workers. And I don't know if we're to that point again or not, but I think we're close.
I didn't know how much then we can get it.
I don't.
Never came back from that.
It's, it's, but we're limited on what we can put in that levy, and we have to get it down.
Yeah, they're giving us four years and we're on one right.
Well, in the state, when they do this stuff, they didn't realize, I think, they didn't realize that. All the, all the counties do is provide services, that's exactly what we're, what we're doing, so when they come in and, and. Start cutting levy, they're gonna control on how things work, essentially, if it doesn't work for us, we have to cut the services because that's what we cut. Um, that's what we offer, so, th- they don't, I don't, I don't think they quite understand how this lays out. Um, the services they don't wanna deal with or mess with, all down to the county, county takes care of it, and then when they try to control what money we get. That makes it even more difficult, so, so really, all you're asking is for justification ahead of time, instead of just hiring, we come in. Present that as long as we have the justification, then we're approved, we move forward with it. Before we get into the hiring process and then come in after the fact, already told someone they have a job and have to go back and tell them, hey, guess what, board says you don't.
I mean, maybe we took the ball, maybe that's why it's more, it's been more of that, but.
All hiring needs free approval to the board supervisor. Right, and essentially it's existing, not, you know, I mean.
Existing and.
You know, right, yeah.
Maybe it was more than likely gonna be. You predict that you need another employee in your office next year, and you know, you're gonna make do until you can get it in the new budget, I mean, it's hard to add. Anywhere from beyond sixty to a hundred thousand dollars for every employee that comes in. So how do you justify that in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, unless you've already got it in there, doesn't happen. So you need to project a year ahead of time whether you need employees, and that's something we can have. You know, it doesn't hurt to have discussions outside the budget long before we start working on it, because.
Right.
We gotta have a chance of working, so.
Right, well, your budget question should happen year round because.
So basically, we would say there'd be, make a motion then to, to be no more. New or existing rehires without approval, previous approval of board.
That's your motion.
That'd be my motion.
Now, what is there like gonna be a date on that, or I mean, is it fair to the ones that already have jobs hanging out there that they need to get?
This would have to be going forward with being going over, so you could continue on with the process.
From day one.
And. Yep, it's not to say.
Right.
Might end up being cut yet, you might have to deal with that, it'll be you dealing with it, not us, because it is your department.
On his, pretty slim law edit, I mean, he doesn't over budget.
I am, I'm, yep, yep, and I mean, I'll just make it clear, my biggest complaints I get on the county is they have too many employees sometimes, from the, from the outside. So.
The biggest complaint, I guess. In certain apartments.
So what's your notice again?
There are no new or rehiring of existing employees happens without the pre- prior approval of the board. That sound right?
Sounds right.
Okay.
They're second to that.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on it? Bro, little bird.
Hi.
Stone, hi. Okay, guys, keep doing what you're doing, just, we know what's going on, but we're just trying to do our best. It's a serious budget changes up here, and the next few words, it's not gonna be fun to be a supervisor, because we have to have conversations like this, and I don't really get it. This is worse than drainage, and I hate drainage. I'm down the middle of the screen, so, even though the board.
All right, we will jump back up, John, thanks for being patient with us, we just have to discuss the wrong things this morning. How you doing?
I'm doing okay.
Yeah.
Good.
But. I've been sort of fighting back issues from the past, so bear with me. Um, well, good morning, everyone, good to see you all again, um, bringing you up to date on some of the things that we've got going on and expecting range. Uh, I don't know if you all are potentially impacted by. Um, all the carbon capture pipelines and all that's happening on that, um. As you probably know, I U V has been finished with their hearing process, one, two, three, four, so. Um, and as far as I know, they've got everything they need to make a decision. When that will come is anybody's guess.
So would that be for the current projected pipeline, or I'm sure you're well aware of the.
I would, I would.
So I didn't know they have to go through the process.
And of course, the big question is that everybody's. Whether they're gonna be able to use them in the domain.
And then you'll probably wanna be thinking more about that resolution too.
We, uh, I know you're, you're from Venus, I'm sure this week or whatever it was last week, but, well, that's something we gotta work on of that resolution, is this, so the one from Wright County?
Yeah, well, the Wright County one was actually sort of a joint effort between us and Wright County, they used ours. They modified it with some of their circumstances, and I personally think the improvements they made were good. Um, so we sort of modified ours now again, um, and I expect as other counties to go through it, and we have communication with them. And there are drainage attorneys or county attorneys, we'll see other things, and maybe we have to change, so it is a fluid document, but the one we have out there now is. Is sort of a joint effort between, um, our legal counsel, legal counsel for Wright County, so.
Could you send me the most recent one, please?
Yep.
I asked him for it last week, he sent it to me and I fired it to these guys to just look at it.
Yeah.
I thought unless we're gonna even think about doing it, there's no use.
And was there a county already getting sued? Was there a county already getting sued?
There's not that I'm aware of.
I'm not sure why they were getting sued, they did something else. I, I, yeah, I don't know if it was over the drainage deal, okay, it might be a combination of both.
I have a question, the original one that I got for me like, oh, a year and a half ago. It had both the pipeline in it, transmission lines, all of that stuff, the latest one you sent is only the pipeline, is there a reason you took the other stuff out?
The latest one we sent was the one that Wright County did. I can send you a more general one if you want it.
Well, it's, it's just something we'd have to look at, and if we wanna make it more specific.
Yeah.
Add the language to it.
Yeah.
Go from there, because we wanna add anything, you know, outside of just the, the carbon pipeline or natural gas pipeline or whatever.
Talked about drainage in this company, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, ours started that with COAX. It started out very specific, and then we had county say, well, we've got. Transmission lines we're worried about, we've got wind farms we're worried about, so we broaden it over time, so, yeah, we do have a broader version.
It may have totally off the subject.
Cause the one you sent me, not only is there a resolution in there just with pipeline, but when I click on it for the. Utility permit that you sent with it, that says pipeline, electrical transmission lines, communication lines.
Yeah, the second one was our document.
Well, no, this is the application form.
Yeah.
Okay, that's your, so, we just gotta, if you're gonna do a resolution, you gotta, and you want that. You gotta make a map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
All right, moving on, um. We'd started the process last year where we have, uh, the, uh. Drainage clerk, which we're now calling drainage administrators meet, um, during the summer, and we had a meeting, um, in July. That went over very, very well, we had, uh, about twenty-five individuals there, and we came in with no agenda. We just said we're gonna sit down and have a discussion for three hours and be good, I was. Sort of worried going in that we wouldn't be able to fill the time, but. We had no trouble filling that night, so we have scheduled that meeting again for this year, that'll be July eighteen. Last thing I'll talk about quickly is legislative process, legislature is in session for the year. Um, I D D A, uh, as an organization, we do not have any specific bills that we are proposing this year. But that's not the stadium, won't be busy, there's always stuff you have to watch, and always bills to come down the pipe. Uh, I do wanna find out that there was a bill that came down last week, Senate Call twenty-one fifty-one. Um, by Senator Guth. Um, it is a, uh. Pretty significant change in drainage law. And it's twenty-one pages long, and it's a pretty complex piece of legislation to, to read through. Yes, I, I know, I wanna stress, first of all, that's not an I D D A bill. Uh, we are registered as under cited on it. Uh, I would urge you all to take a look at it and see if you have concerns, if you, if you do have some things that you. Think need watching, or certainly let me know, um. My reading of it, and I haven't read it in depth, but I've sort of scanned it a couple of times, instead it's a. Pollution in search of a problem. Uh, I don't really know everything that we're trying to solve in the bill. There are some things where it limits your authority, and, and generally, we are not going to be. In favor of anything that's gonna limit your authority of drainage district trustees to run your trust, to run your districts. And to run drainage in your county, so when we see a bill comes along to put restrictions on that, or put additional. Steps that you have to go through to do a repair or do an improvement, we have concerns about that, and we will be expressing those concerns. Um, but as of now, we are registered as on the site of the bill, that can always change if the bill changes, or if we get. An indication that people. And, um, without a behalf of responding to any questions.
Well, when we heard some big focuses, it's basically the next step on this, carbon pipeline stuff to make sure infrastructure is protected.
Right.
Uh, if something does come in through the county, so. Um, like I said, this is, yeah, we just heard, we can, we, we can have, I'm, I'm pulling it signing on and. Um, obviously we have poet overhand in town, so.
Yep. Come on the county, surely, it's someplace, and just find out where it'll come from, so.
Yeah. We've been approached by some, or discussions already individually, so. It will be brought to the table at some point here in the near future, so that's why I wanna make sure we're, we're on the right path to.
Yeah.
Protect the hundreds of years of, and millions of dollars of, after we've got, so.
Well, I know when Dakota Access came out, we prepared that resolution for them and, um. When we had a county decide the resolution. Code Access was not happy at first, they had no idea. How much authority drainage to prepare to protect their infrastructure, and, and they thought, you know, we're gonna sue you, this is. Going way overboard, you don't have that kind of authority, and we sat down with them, you know, pointed out the code sections. Pointed out the authority we did have, and they eventually realized over the course of. Couple of weeks that what we were doing was legal, and what we were doing was within the rights and authorities of drainage districts. The other part of that is that, you know, we put a, a crossing fee in the bill. And that crossing fee is revenue generations to create revenue stream to, to fix the problems that. Might come up as a result of the construction, and, uh, I can remember with Dakota Access, we had, uh, the crossing fee set. And, um. County supervisor looked at it and said, um, let's double it. And put act, it's never going, never even said a word.
I can understand why.
Yeah.
The drainage did fix, so.
Yeah.
Well, I can remember early in the process, when Dakota Access, I gotta call my office, somebody represented Dakota Access. Well, I said, I don't know the exact number, but it's thirty-nine hundred and. Dead silent. He said, three nine hundred, I said, yeah.
Yeah.
He goes, well, I have no idea, but most people don't.
Three thousand of them around North Central Iowa.
Yeah.
So, and everybody pictures Iowa on the map, we're just flat with cornfield, right?
Yeah, so, not to mention all the private drainage out there, the good in the districts.
Exactly, exactly.
So. No, well, we appreciate you guys working on those resolutions to do with the other counties and.
Yeah.
Something we need to get on the agenda, I think, and. Acting out, it's better to be proactive than reactive after they've already started signing, using some leases, blah, 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 so.
Yeah.
It would be no question.
No, I do need to look at it, see if there's any changes, you have, yeah, take a peek at it.
One more time, look at it again, make sure that he realizes this time there is a possibility one coming here, so it's, I, to me, I think he, he should be all over it.
When he goes to fight in court for it, he could have to mull it down.
Yep.
Yep, we just gotta decide really long, do it on pipelines or transmission line or every. Transmission line or every gap.
Well, thank you, John, we appreciate your time and your efforts. Take care of that back. You only get one of those, so.
Can you find out when you have a back injury that everything's connected?
Okay, we're down to eighteen now. Discussion and possible action on health insurance incentive. Well, we talked a little last week, I called. Brian short after a meeting, a discussion with him. Basically, if we get that five percent. It's gonna save the county about fifty thousand dollars next year, so. You know, going into. Which always seems like an increase. We've got some money. You know, to offset that increase sure helps, uh, if it's two and three percent. It isn't enough. Uh, so, and we were talking. A little bit of, of, we can punish. The people that don't use it, or we can incentivize the people that do. Or participate in the wellness program, so. So. My. Automatically, if we hit that five percent. That's when it becomes an incentive. Right? We hit that five percent.
So we have read it on all of them.
I mean, so that for us, it makes sense to not incentivize our employees. Once we hit that five percent, we incentivize it. That fifty thousand, as far as I'm concerned. Can be divvied out. If we want to put anything else on top of that, as part of our. You know what I mean, just, we're, we're, when I say that fifty thousand, we're kinda just guessing on what our savings are gonna be.
But that. Isn't gonna be a true savings because that's gonna be, that's gonna be factored into your new premium for the following year. That, that doesn't really work out like that.
Understand, yeah, where. If, yeah, so if we have a. You know, a seven percent increase like we're looking at this year. From the, it's five percent in savings deduction, basically. But otherwise, how else are we gonna get? If you don't incentivize them, there's no sense of even having the wellness program because we're not gonna get the five percent.
Two has to go to the employees that did it, not ones.
Exactly, exactly. And we have to get that five percent, otherwise, I mean, where, where else? Well, how else are we gonna do, where else are we gonna get money from?
I emailed Ryan too and, um, I asked about the, cause I was thinking the same thing, that unless we get the five percent. Nobody should get anything, but then. How do you get the ball rolling? So what he had said that he didn't think that it should be. Um, based on the five percent and, but hopefully if. You do that incentive, hopefully. As years go on, everybody will jump in because. Especially if we do what you're proposing. But that's gonna cost another hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus in the next budget. So it's a real scary.
And wasn't that the way it was set up two years ago and we just never got to the five? We've never, it's never came in. The way I read the old one.
But I guess my, I mean, you know. Where do we start? And what, you know.
Well, I mean, I think the incentive is, is if they can make it and we keep doing this, is that we don't have to go and charge any of our employees for part of their health insurance.
And if we, um, do it, if we get it rolling now. We could start with January one. And then we could ease into it and only do half. Of the fiscal year.
Actually, that's the weird thing is our renewals or calendar year or fiscal year, and we gotta try to figure out how to make this. And then you got our incentive time, January through October. Yeah, we gotta kinda figure out what's, where to start and stop and.
Cause he basically said. The first that you could possibly do it because you'd have to get them through their cycle of this year. And then you could start at January one versus July one if you wanted to, so then we, we'd ease into it with half. Half of the additional instead of the whole. Hundred and eighty thousand. It's a possibility anyway.
Got a bunch of department heads sitting here looking at me, what's their thoughts?
Mark, this year, you know, saying that topic, we only have the three things.
Right, it's really simple literature to get her, we should be able to get that five percent.
Your assessment and just go on there, log in, fill your questions out and you don't, I mean. You don't have to even be, you just go through and click if that's really how you feel, but. It needs to be done and then it's the blocking program, as long as you have a. At least even for a day, you participated.
You don't have to make.
It has to register some kind of data.
But at that five percent, we're still only on the two, the, the assessment and the.
That, that other is extra, I mean, there's, there's other assessments online you can do and gain more money.
You name it, I mean, it's, there's good ideas on there, you have to sit and go on there and look at it.
And until you get more people on board, our premiums aren't gonna. Level out or go down.
Because, tell me, he's always just given full range, there's never been any accountability for your health insurance. I mean. Where else do you get, and I know we don't have a family plan, that's always sticking with like some people, but. Individual, individual health plan that worked down, it gets really good. There is no employee contribution and there's probably nowhere in North Carolina. So. And we just let it keep rolling, rolling, rolling.
And that's the one, one thing every year that always intrigues you.
That's guaranteed, five to eight percent.
And with this at the beginning. We may get to that point with our partial self-funding of being able to help. Buy down.
Right.
Your family insurance plans. That's the way, that was the whole, whole point of setting this up, we've got one heck of a risk. In the middle of a pandemic.
You scared me a lot.
And again, what, it worked. It's been working, we need to make it continue to work. Because once you get to that comfortable number of reserve cash. Then that's when we can take anything beyond that and just. Family health insurance, so it's, it's still maybe a year, you know, road, but. We wanna, we wanna try to do that so we can retain our employees because we know we can't just throw dollars at them. Because that.
I want, I want to say that just to that a couple of years ago was. The, uh, the incentive was if you do your things and we make the five percent. You continue to get your experience for free. Uh, if we never made that five percent, every one of us in this room should be paying. Or should we agree? We kinda think that'll just. Action that happened, and that's kinda what they're, actually now. We need, then, I mean, we can make that, keep saving on premiums without having to ask for employee contributions. That's, to me, is a big incentive. Cause it's all pretext.
And department head, do you have any feelings?
Kind of goes back to department head to be the one. To talk to their employer.
Beat that up with wellness so many times and. There is people that just aren't gonna do it, and if I had four people, that would be easy, but I got twenty-eight.
I think every department is represented on the board. You guys, we put you on there. My name's never been included, I'll, I'll gladly come, but I mean. I, I honestly wondered how can we work because I, I was a part of everything else, but I just thought, well, it's just one more meeting, I can stay out of it. Veterans affair, but, you know, I mean, so, but everybody else sheriff's got a representative.
We've carried two and we actually let it.
Nah, you guys, like you said, I'd gladly come, but. To me, that gets to be, doesn't always, unless you happen to be the representative, so it does fall on you, you got Jolene and she's a work. She worked really good for thankfully. She does pretty much everything, but.
What are you thinking, it's all quiet over there?
We gotta do something. I just, you know, you guys said this out here for a few years. We're not getting that five percent. I just don't know how to.
I mean, with some of it, would it? Cause I. I know that. You know, when you have lots of employees, it's harder to make employees do it, but if you just literally took one, cause when stuff comes out in our office. Five of us sit at the computer. I just, like, I'm thinking, I don't know what Richard's department. Participation is, but if he has a day where it's like, okay, guys, come to the courthouse and just, we'll, we'll literally click. And, you know, and that's great to me, I didn't know that.
No, I don't know how many of them, I don't know how many of them actually participate, I know there's some out there that. Don't want anything to do with it.
Exactly.
But, I mean, I, to me, it's just, it's, it's crazy, cause. All of them get DOT physicals, I know that doesn't count, but it's like. And then, I assume everyone gets an annual physical, why would you? And that's where, to me, I just don't see why it's not happening.
Well, whether you get a COVID shot or not, get a COVID shot, everybody knows how that bite is and that's the same thing you do with your employees. Do I want that information out there, do I not, and, and give that through to them? And it's, it's fine. They don't have for this, but they're not gonna get it inside from us anymore.
Can public health give those physicals?
Uh, I don't believe.
Well, you don't have to have blood work.
You need a physician's signature is basically the big one.
But we have, we have somebody for the county, right, a physician for the county, right?
Just a board member. We don't have, we have public health, we don't have.
Right, right, but I was just wondering if there could be a day when like. The county has. We have a number of training things that we need to do.
Brought in a van and everybody. That, that's, that is, that's a trigger. All I'm saying is, this is where we gotta be, guys, and the more.
I mean.
It does, it does. You know, and I'm. It's, and I get if they don't wanna do it, then it's fine, I just hope that. Percent isn't enough to keep us out of this five percent savings. And punish the people that are, because essentially that's what it's doing, for. You know, so that's why we wanna come up with this incentive for, and I say, it's safe, just say if it was a hundred dollars a month. Twelve hundred dollars a year. Jake, what's it taking, go down to Mason City, see your doctor, and to do your online assessment, two hours? Like three hours a year, by the time you go down to see your doctor, come back, do your online stuff. For twelve hundred dollars?
And I would hope that would help, but as wellness on the committee, we've done that, we've taken all the extra money and divided it up between them that have done that. We've tried to incentivize as much as we can for them and. You still have the ones.
Well, I was gonna say, there's, there's offices that we have, they. Participate, I mean, everybody's participated every year since it started, whether, whether there's incentives or not, they, they do it because they did. They do it. And then there's some like, I mean, like, damn space and where you. Without, you know. They get, they ain't, they ain't buying the carrot, you might have to use the stick.
To me, that's where, to me, that's where the incentive is, is hey, I continue to get my health insurance paid for. Let me just a coin of dollars on my paycheck. I'm not one who likes to have meetings, but is that something like, you know, we sat through the insurance meetings when the, all this. Extra stuff was changing or whatever, and then somewhere you need to have an employee meeting and say, hey, just so you know, if we don't reach this. Next year it's gonna cost everybody a hundred dollars out of pocket, that insurance, you know, so that way it's re, it's real to them because of all the sudden it's.
No, you have to say you're gonna get a hundred more.
Say, we can't, we can't punish, we only incentivize. The participated.
Me, it's an incentive either way. And we have actually, if we did something, actually, two years ago, we still don't get clarification on that, either withdraw or do a new one. If we're gonna change it. You know, because we did.
Well, we're gonna change it, we should need probably throw it into a resolution, so that's. Put a little more teeth on it and then if anything changes, we're gonna go back at that resolution specifically and then a new one would just. That would be absolutely. So we need to do just a little bit more homework on it, you think, Dan? But just let your employees know this is.
There's a comment in the chat.
So I need to look at employees being double insured, it's so easy to be double insured, also county when an employee has no.
We've, we've tried, there, there's nothing. I, I wish we could just write a check to somebody else's employer so that we're not both paying, but it, I've asked and asked and it just doesn't work that way.
I asked about that, I said, you know, what do we do if you wanna kick me out, I mean. But then again. You kick somebody out who's participating. And I, I don't know what the answer is.
Was getting the annuity, so I kept the, the, he, he was, he had the single and I had the family at the bank and that's the way we ran until I came here.
Right, I mean, it's too bad we can't do that.
I think there is a way, but. With that fact too of, okay, we're still trying to hit this. Eighty percent of the group has to hit it, we get our five percent, but now we just eliminated five people that were.
So you lowered the pool and took away.
So they're happy because they're, you know, cause you could legally pay, I think it's. Uh, it was forty-eight hundred, I think it's more than that a year.
I don't, I, that hasn't been recommended by.
In the, cause in the private sector, you can without being taxed for it, like.
I, I don't know if that works in county, cause I've asked about it.
Cause if there, I mean, if it did. If there was an incentive to do that, but then like saying. It would save us instead of paying, you know, a thousand dollars a month, we're paying them five hundred not to take insurance, so the county saved five hundred dollars a month.
I don't, I think Jackie's right, I don't think it can happen in government. When we have this conversation, I said, I, I'll, I'll bounce out, right, I know, if, if, if there's something to it, right, and everything.
But is our participation based on being on the insurance or just an employee?
Uh, if you being on the insurance.
I think it's a combination of the two.
Cause I have one that was. And I think her head counts, still count.
The, the part timers get, they get the, if they participate, they get the benefits from ISAC, so they get the money. They don't participate, they don't hurt our numbers, right?
Just like spouses.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Well. We'll do some more homework and see what comes on, but I guess as far as how this incentivizing works, but.
But I, I, I do think, you know, people. I'm not saying as a, as a department head that we don't have sway and ultimate say over our employees, but when. When it comes from HR and the board of supervisors that. This is something that should happen, it's, it carries a different tone, you know what I, I guess I don't know what. What you guys think, but.
Well, and you give them time to do it.
Everybody sits at the computer.
Everybody, they should have that opportunity to do it. Everybody's got. Quick time, you go to the doctor, so it's like you're not getting paid, you're getting paid to go and then you're getting paid because.
As long as everybody has access to computers, cause I know your guys, your people do, but yours.
Mike's been pretty active with.
I mean, I know like. Their guys are doing the walking thing, cause I've heard several of them, when they talk about wearing their Fitbit, they're like, well, when I'm driving the maintainer, I get thirty thousand steps. Just the, just the vibration and the speed, right?
Mowing works too, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think we'll just do our homework, but it is coming, guys. Just kinda let everybody know, we would really, really. Appreciate the, the participation because if not. Uh, their insurance will never get any cheaper.
I know, well, maybe we'd always appreciate the idea that we can make a better, ideas.
Absolutely.
But whoever's. In charge of sending out the emails, if you want to throw my email on there. I'll gladly come or send somebody. Meetings generally aren't that long, no, so, and it's what, once a quarter usually?
Meetings generally aren't that long, no, so, and it's what, once a quarter usually, something like that.
One time I have some knock up.
Right away, next week's come up, there's a lot just as. But usually, usually we come pretty quick with the first two, because you're trying to. Get that initial push out of the way.
If you just get started in the new year.
A lot of times it's, you get that. Your, whatever evaluation, everybody done in that first couple of months, and then something you don't have to worry about. And we can stand up for it.
Well, we'll keep this hot topic and. Will be more discussion we had, so. All right. So, we've seen some, uh, cities, counties, everybody's doing a resolution. Opposing to minority rate increase on the utility board of that. That just came through Mason City via Servo County.
Those resolutions going to the one or are they going to?
Yeah, yeah, that, that it's supposed that, it sounds like there's a lot of people.
Sort of timeframe on that?
Right, we, I know we've got one, we just probably gotta change the language in it.
Yeah, cause that one was ruled by the city.
Yeah, yeah.
We just have to change the language in it.
Right.
Can I call me take that one through then?
I don't know, I didn't talk to Chris about that, he just asked me if. If I wanna look at it, present it to you guys and. See if we wanna do anything, and I talked to Melissa because she got some information on it, and she was gonna possibly send it out to the cities.
Okay.
Cause a lot of the cities are, are like me, it's a city doing it. So she hasn't, I talked, I checked her last week and she hasn't done that yet.
There it is, that's something they're discussing down there, cause they're, Michelle, their assistant, had asked. Colvin asked me where we got ours from, I said, well, you need to pop that Chris Watts, cause he got it. So I think it's, it's something they're working on too, um, because. Where they show a lot of these, in your, uh, line rates are quite a bit higher than a lot of these co-ops.
Well, I see it, which is kinda the odd.
Forty, fifty, sixty per time, so, uh, we're not gonna grab another twenty percent or whatever, something to be, seems a bit.
And what else, we got Northwood, against Manly and Alliance.
Yeah.
And everybody around it is Heartland.
Grafton's got their own, which they buy from Heartland. Then everybody over there, we're, we're all holler.
It is? I thought you guys are.
Quote me for sure, but I don't think they're.
I don't know.
Eight thirty eight.
Or ten?
Yeah.
Part of Danville's Alliance.
Are you on a line? They graft it has their own. Yeah, anyways, if you look at that, I mean, if they go that increase, just the dollar. All the cities and everybody within the county, so.
We're lucky, water and wastewater is hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've taken that area out there. They got that area out there, otherwise. I think they did.
I think let's, let's look at what we've got and, uh.
I'll see if I can find some more too.
Send them on to death and just say, hey, turn the verbage and see what they say. Something you can handle?
I sent that to you.
Right, no, it's just, just support that we don't agree with it, and we'd like to see him kept where they're at. We pay it up, and that's why I say we, it's everybody, it's on.
I just wouldn't know, cause they had some stats in there, and I wouldn't ever read county stats.
Yeah, they really got, they broke it. But we could do a channel one, you know, general, just support.
Yep. Special of Snyder contract, we still haven't had a discussion, or is that a new point now?
Which one?
The meal permits?
What I was working on, I didn't get back with Ryan because I was waiting for. Neapolitan to send back a quote, did you get off to them?
I haven't gotten it, oh yes.
Yeah, kinda waiting for a quote from Neapolitan.
No way, no way, not, neither for that kind of money.
No, not for that. That's why I didn't get back in touch with you.
But I would like to see what Neapolitan's got. Any else on the flyover that contract? I saw there's some more stuff come through, but.
Well, I just, Sam sent me the old contract and then the new contract. And it's not met.
Yeah, so what do you?
Well, the old contract was done in eighteen, for a flyover in nineteen, twenty and twenty one, and then in. Twenty one, they added on two more phases, so that contract basically is for nine years. And it's eighty four thousand for the second phase, eighty four thousand for the third phase, which comes up to a hundred and sixty six, sixty eight thousand. But at the bottom, it's like two forty eight, well, if it's eighty four thousand per year, that's eighty four is, uh, two fifty two. Which is not two forty eight, so what Sam and I came up to the conclusion of, that first contract that's not on there. That this thing got amended to. Someplace in there Joel added something to increase it by four thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that was.
And with the new contract, it's both, it's ten thousand for the assessors, part of it, which was. As far as I, I can understand, that is for the, uh, correction.
Yeah, there's a.
The change finder on there, and then the second part of it is twenty five, so there you're looking at thirty six thousand dollars a year. Well, that's, one, once it, and at the bottom of that contract, it breaks it out into twenty eight thousand dollars and seventy nine. Or twenty eight thousand seventy nine dollars per year, well, a new contract is thirty six thousand, so yeah, it does cost more. And that's the thing I'm trying to figure out. Because if I gotta make a decision on this, do I think that a flyover two years? Going over the three years, even though we juggle it from one department to the next, it's still citizens' tax money. And are we going to pick up? Enough to justify that, and that's the decision we as supervisor gotta make, but before I was gonna do that, I needed to get the right figures. To look at what I'm looking at, did you guys look at that?
I did, and a lot of jargon to me, but yeah, the numbers, I see what you're saying, and I see how it was broke down, but.
That original contract is for nine years, that two hundred forty eight thousand.
Does somebody need to have a discussion with Joel and what? I just, or not, I mean, after, I mean, I know he signed a lot of them. And that's, he was.
And when does? When does that one actually expire?
We have a, we have, the, the, the third phase of it is twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven, so we have, we're already contracted. For a flyover in twenty five.
So then, wouldn't we wait?
Well, that's what I said last week, I said, we don't have to do it right now.
Down, or down in the price again?
So.
Did you set that? More to come?
Do you get anything in the chat on it?
Uh, no.
Okay. Anyway, that's what I kinda put two and two together, one's at twenty eight thousand seventy nine dollars, and one's at roughly just about thirty six.
So scrap it for now?
Yeah. So there's a reason to have that discussion again, take it off. Yes, let's check with the Alton on the.
And that shouldn't be much, because it'd just be setting up that page and, and putting the permit out there. The thing that. Is more important probably is the education portion, so that people actually know that that's what they're supposed to be doing now.
Yep, yep, need to educate them, and yes, make it simple on the internet, so they go there, they look at permits, can click right on it and.
Not everybody's gonna go to the end.
But. Yeah, as far as the Snyder Geo permits, even though it's a really nice. Layout, it's little. Yeah, cause we gotta justify that too.
Right, ten thirty, gonna be here?
I thought that was eleven thirty.
Ten thirty? Alright, so you get, uh, very budget update discussions, and about, if you guys can play.
Not really much to fight about, yes, cause I had, just, I sent you what I have together so far, and I still gotta. Make sure I have the expenses in the right places and get the rest of the revenue in there. But I'm closer.
Yeah, really, till you get really close, we don't have to have a workshop. But the minute you get close, we need to have a workshop on it, so.
Which I already know, um, if you go through the health, with the health insurance, that, um, general supplemental is gonna have to go off.
That one we can move. Well, wait a minute.
I think, as far as I know, that's not part of the.
No, that is, supplemental is, those are the things that are locked in, so the state's not saying, they're not dictating on that.
Even though that's still gonna ultimately.
Oh yeah, it'll affect the tax. It's a general basic that they're hitting hard.
But then people are just jockeying still, cause some are gonna have to bump into rural basic, or, um, rural supplemental too. We're not to that point, but.
But I thought there was only certain thing, there's only certain things that you can stick in supplemental.
And most of them we already have.
Yeah, we got them in there already, we, it'd be nice if we could jockey. But from what I've looked at, we, you've got everything in there that.
I think that road was crossed before I got here, cause everything was already in there.
Yeah, I don't know when it happened, but. What, what we can get in there is in there, so.
One thing, um, that popped into my head, well. Berbert was here, um. One possibility is bumping up, and Val brought this to me, that, um, bumping up the, um, admin fee. I guess when Abago did it, they went from the dollar up to the max of five dollars, and they pay a portion of their drainage clerk's salary from now.
I don't see anything to matter with that, I think it should be that way.
And then another thing that I thought of is, um, we could. Determine a portion of. My salary and or Chelsea's salary for, um, elections, and put that in general supplemental versus general.
Cause all the election stuff is in supplemental. From what I pick up, yeah, I think that's a good idea too. I mean, you're, you're, yeah, you're working there, you might as well stick part of your salaries in there.
So I'll just have to see on that.
Jack, do you have an idea about when you might be having a budget?
I'm just pugging away, I'm, if people leave me alone, I can get it done, if people don't leave me alone, I can't, so.
What's the date?
March fifth, it is drunk then.
I don't, I talked to Jackie about it, I don't know if there's other departments that effects, but, you know, I, I, I'm fearing I need. My twenty two cents per thousand support, so I get my free money from the state, I don't know if there's any other departments that are that way, but. I do know there's some counties during this budget process that. Struck, you know, with the, everything shifting, that they're struggling to, to meet their. Their levy rate, their, their minimum for the state rate, or the state money, so. Yeah.
You don't wanna give that up.
We juggle.
It's not a ton of money, but you know what? Oh, fifteen thousand dollars is fifteen thousand, I mean, especially in a smaller budget, it's a big deal. How much we're gonna cut it each year?
Right.
And do you still have my revenue spreadsheet? Whenever you can get them out there, yeah, if you get that, I'd appreciate it.
Anything else?
No.
You put some of them can boxes out front?
Yep.
All those things are on the list, you don't want that.
I wanna take away from the fireworks more.
We'll have a whole building that's partying while you're in this.
Our department had discussion.
I just kinda forgot, tell you that on Monday, the, the, the engineers competitions, and that's what they do every year. I'm a judge for that, if you guys are okay. That all the local schools do that. They kind of fly in, that kinda helped for months, so, you guys are okay with it, I'll be there.
So last Monday, the Colvin and I met with the DOT. About the DD fourteen and the crossovers, five sixty five, just, we kinda walked them through some of, well, I walked them through how the water flows right now. Apparently having the resident expert on it, but it's where, they, they had some concerns on where they were actually proposing the. The cuts and crossings, I don't, I.
I talked to Mike Frank.
Yeah, Mike, that's really.
And he, he was asking me, and I said. I know we gotta go on to that highway, um, I basically sent it back to, to Jacob, and so if there's something that you. Want specific, now's the time.
Right, and I told him, I said, talk, talk with Jacob, but, but I said, anytime anyone wants to go down there and meet, I said, I'll show you what I know. And, but I, I explained everything to him, and he said that he was, got the gist of what I was saying, we did it over teams, it wasn't the person, but.
The one they're concerned, there's already several crossings underneath the highway now.
Well, they, where they have the proposed crossing, I think, Mike said like, there's a fifteen foot cut, possibly. Is one of the, this one of their concerns, where if they were to shift where the proposed main is, then they can use a shallower cut. But.
Okay, now, he was concerned too, is the, uh. Be the gas line defeats Northwood.
Yeah.
That's across that field there at some point, and where, is that any across once or twice?
Well, that's one, that was one of his concerns of where it's proposed right now, it crosses it in right away, where. Then all the, what, he said what they'd have to strip back to be able to do, they're boring like they'd need to, he said they'd be into the pipeline, so he was gonna try and talk to him about possibly moving it. Out into the field so they could cross the pipeline where they have room across the pipeline at that.
Well, thanks for helping with that one.
Like I said, I, I don't, that one, I, I probably do have the most knowledge of how things flow down there at this point, cause I had to learn, but.
Any other from the department head category?
Let's go one question for Rich and the department here, um, that chat, one, one day we're trying to buy yesterday, and they're doing the same deal, where they got some condemned bridges here in the last. Recently. Um, and they're even considering, I don't know which road, they might have a couple of roads, they might decide to go just permanently because of that, is there anything? That we would have in that situation, do we have any that could fall under that, I'm, I'm still thank you, I have one over here, and I know I got one on mine.
We have bridge, everybody.
Now, but I can't.
I know a few years ago, I went through a list of all of our dead end roads that had. If you've got still. Different accesses that it's hard to just abandon it, and people have to, but yeah, I mean, I, you know. It's a, it's something that we've talked, we talked about a lot in the state of Iowa is. We're fortunate, we've got a one mile grid pattern everywhere.
Yep.
But it's also unfortunate, because every stream gets crossed every mile, and so that just increases the structure, so. Do we have roads that we can close, uh? Probably a lot, but are we gonna do that?
I don't know, I don't know, I mean, like some of these are minimal maintenance already, but, I mean, you know, but you're still minimum maintenance, you have to have bridges crossing. Maybe you don't.
Not necessarily, I mean, it's, when, I mean, when you have a minimum maintenance road, a level B, even a level C, which I don't think we have any mid-level Cs, but a level B is. You're telling the public, you're not gonna maintain this to a standard, and it's almost like, when we get to it, we'll get to it.
Okay.
Um, on a level D, um, and that's what the signs are for, saying, hey, you're entering at your own risk. Um, not that we wouldn't have signs posted for the structures that were. In that capacity of not being able to take full loads, but, yeah, I mean, it's gonna get to a point where. We can't keep up, and I know we've got stuff, stuff closed right now, and we'll do the best we can at getting stuff put back in as soon as we can, but. We're fortunate, I think, in this county, for as many structures, what we have is. Two closed and one, one restricted, but. I think if you go to eastern Iowa, there's a lot more bridges closed in that area than, than you can imagine.
You know, what I'm thinking of is an old bridge, and I think, I don't know why you couldn't do a box out, over, over, I mean, it's drainage dish.
The bigger issue is, bigger issue is, if it's, if it's a closed old structure, putting a box over it, and it's still the hydraulics of.
Right.
Making sure you get the right flow through there, I, you know. Making sure you get the right flow through there, I, you know. Box culverts are nice, they, they go in quick. Whether or not they're cost effective, their, their catastrophic failure rates different than a bridge, you know. So.
Yeah, and that one, I don't know, to right above it is where they're gonna do that proposed wetland deal.
Oh yeah, over there and.
How that'll affect the flow and the rates and.
I think they'll design the, if it's a wetland, they still can't really change the.
I mean, there'll be water coming through there, but coming out, however that works out.
I think typically when they do something like that, they still control the natural flows, so if they retain water, they still want. Same amount of, they can't increase the flows, they can only keep them same or maybe even reduce them, but. Hopefully, they're not increasing the flows that, you know, that changes any of the design of any structure that goes in.
It looked like they were just going, the flow was gonna stay the same on.
They'll be taking water out of there.
That's what the blueprint showed to me.
It's gonna be, yeah, I think, we're getting to the point. With as many structures that we have, as enough fast they're going, I'm just gonna keep the consultant on board and start. Getting some of the stuff, because with the roads and the house, it's just. It's tough to, to keep up with all, all of those things, but. Staffed down.
Yep. Good. Thanks.
Anything else, department heads? Supervisor's Weekly, you know.
Uh, we just had that one word back home evening. And we uh. Let's move the budget, and. Got an update on the energy.
Can they bring that to you?
Did the numbers change at all?
I gave you the original number.
Yeah, I had.
And it didn't change.
Oh, I saw I had one at Abago too, so. Pretty quiet. Alright, anything else we need to add to the?
You guys were having a meeting?
Yes.
Thursday.
February thirteenth, Thursday?
Yes.
At six?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm talking about the one this Thursday, the morning.
Oh, that's on there already.
Yeah, conference board is here.
Yeah, farm bureau, they're on there.
We have separate, we can close this meeting, we're separate for the. Uh, taking most, most into it here.
So, I'll second that.
Alright, I'll play right. Okay, vote, meeting adjourned.